Begin. The time is 6:00 P.M. Deborah, would you please call the roll?
Councilperson Archie?
Here.
Councilperson Bass?
Here.
Chairman Perry?
Here.
Councilperson Ma?
Here.
Councilperson Bega?
Here.
The pledge will be, it will be followed by David Zajak. We'll do the pledge and the opening exercise this evening.
Lord, today we ask for your calming love in a time of uncertainty, chaos, and turbulence in our state, our country, and our world. We ask for your guidance as we look to make decisions that affect all that we have sworn to uphold and defend. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path and help us to stay on track. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we open tonight's meeting, I would like to say a couple of words. I sat back for the last couple of meetings and we gave warnings about all the talking and yelling, going back and forth, people wanting to make their voices heard. And I am going to give this blanket warning right now. I'm going to ask everyone to please give respect to the people up here and the people talking. I would ask you, please, everyone, to be quiet and please don't go talking and being loud and everything while we're up here trying to have a conversation. Please be respectful of the people at the podium speaking and please be respectful of us up here talking. And also, there are rules when you come up and address the council for you to speak. Please read the rules on the back of the agenda and I ask you to please abide by them. Having said that, we're going to move on now to our agenda. We have a presentation this evening by Mr. Saladin Allah, who has done a lot of work, is very respected. Mr. Allah, would you like to step forward and please give your presentation?
We are having some technical difficulties with our corporate agenda this evening.
Nothing ever goes easy.
Check one, two.
I have the, I have a, we have our presentation. We have ours. It was printed out for us.
All right. Okay, so I got ten minutes. Yeah, so.
Oh, you have a different one?
Yeah, so. All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council, corporate council, residents. Today I wanted to present on a project that was presented before the council back in July 2023. So there were three sitting council members at the time, so three of you are aware of this project already. The other new council members, you are also aware of this project, so this is not the first time that you're laying eyes on this. So I wanted to first put that on the record. Number one, this asphalt mural project does not cost the city a dime. So it's important that I state that upfront because a lot of times we have these conversations about taxpayers and money being taken from here, money being taken from there. This project is fully funded by a very competitive grant that our Niagara Falls National Heritage Area received by Bloomberg Philanthropies. Now Bloomberg Philanthropies is at the forefront of traffic safety art installations. They're the experts on this. And they've been, they've been installing these projects and supporting them across the United States and in Europe for well over a decade. There were 200 cities that applied for this grant and we were one amongst 200 cities that actually received this grant for this project. So we are nationally and internationally known for being a part of this project. The other thing to put on the record is when this project was first presented to the city council, our city administration through some very rigorous evaluation, eventually supported this project. So we got the approval of the city administration and we received the approval of all of the adjacent departments that are necessary to collaborate with in order to install this project. So number one, we have support from the city. Number two, we have support from all of the departments. And number three, it is fully funded. Now, what is the purpose of a traffic safety art installation? The purpose of it is to provide safety to the community. Last time that this was presented before the council, that project was scrutinized about its safety when this was actually a traffic safety project. The question that was not asked is what is currently unsafe in this intersection where we're going to be installing this project? That question wasn't asked. Before you, I submitted our traffic observation data because some of the council members at the time were unsure about the safety in that intersection. And for those who are not aware, we're talking about the intersection at the location where the White Coffee Shop is, the public library, right in that area where Portage de Maine connect. So what we did is we went out and we bought a speed gun. And we took three months of hours of traffic observation that we shared with you this evening. In that traffic observation, one of the things that we learned is that the average speed of cars traveling through that intersection is 41 miles an hour. That is the average speed. We also have images that we submitted of the actual speed of cars that we saw traveling through that intersection. One of the other things that I also included is a high injury map that was produced by the city of Niagara Falls. And on this map, you can literally see all of the intersections in the city and the injury rate and the danger of people in those intersections. The large star that you see on this map is that intersection. The next thing that I also included is the intersection crash history. So you can see evidence of the danger of that intersection. Now, anybody who's walked through that intersection by the public library, anybody, you have a natural inclination to rush from one side of the street to the other. Why do people hurry up and get across the street? People rush to get across the street because it's not a pedestrian-centered intersection. Motorists think that they have the right of way. If you go right across the border to Canada or go to other cities, communities are more walkable, where cars literally stop for pedestrians because it's pedestrian-centered. How do you create pedestrian-centered intersections? You don't just tell people to slow down and put signs up. You build it. That's what this project is. It's building a walkable community that's pedestrian-centered. The other information that I included are three sheets of collisions that have happened in that intersection for the last decade. And one thing that you will notice from this data that is from the city, that most of these collisions happen in broad daylight. Many of them are because of unsafe speed in that intersection. Some of the collisions have happened with pedestrians. Now go back to what I just mentioned about people rushing to get from one side of the street to the other. If you're an able-bodied person and you rush to get across the street, how do you think a child feels? How do you think an elder feels striving to get from one side of the street to the next? Why? Because there are no crosswalks. One thing we observe with our traffic observations is everybody jaywalked. Why? Because there are no crosswalks. So the question is not, is this project safe? The question is, what has happened since July 23rd to today to mitigate the danger that still exists in that intersection? Nothing has happened. We strive to present this as a solution in 2023. From that point to today, this city is now looked at as municipal liability. What does that mean? If you own a bar and some people are patronizing your bar and they tell you, hey, you gotta fix this door because this door is causing a problem with people coming in and out of here, and you're the owner and somebody told you that? Guess who's liable if somebody gets hurt on that, gets hurt on that door and you knew what the issue was? You are liable. Because now you could be looked at as being willfully negligent, willfully. In this map that we show you, there is a, a small island that is also a part of this project. So there's a small asphalt mural in the middle between where the public library is and the other side of the street. Why would we put something like that in the middle of the street? That is called a pedestrian refuge because you have many elders that live in robo-towers that are in motor wheelchairs. Do you expect them to hurry up and ride that across the street in an intersection where motorists think that they have the right of way? You are waiting for something to happen if you do not do something about this. We had hoped that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. Unfortunately, it wasn't. I will that this will be on the next agenda, June 4th, so that we could get this approved, so that we can take care of this issue that is presently a danger in our intersection. Being able to install this mural is only going to require maybe five days of good If you're thinking about the city departments that we're going to collaborate with, like the traffic department, DPW, this is also not a question of overtime. The city has already received DRI funding or Downtown Revitalization Initiative funding, where they have already slated to do the curb cuts in the ADA compliant parts of these intersections. That money is already allocated from the state, so that's not tax money from the city. You have to do nothing but just say, we approve this. Because if you don't, you put the city in a position where now they have liability for anything that happens in that intersection. All somebody has to do is prove that, hey, there was no crosswalks and I twisted my ankle. This happened because the city council did not approve this. It's not going to be on the city administration and it's not going to be on the departments. It is going to be on you. How much time do I have left? Oh, 30 seconds. Y'all got a question in 30 seconds?
We're not, we're not permitted to ask you questions, but we can talk to you afterwards if we stick around.
And you all have my email. You all have my phone number. We shop at the same places. I'm not hard to find. Thank you. Peace.
Yeah, I don't have that one. We have a different one. Okay. Okay, Saladin, thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate it. Okay. Now, moving on to public speakers on the agenda items. Deborah, do you have a list of speakers on agenda items?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead. Call the first item, please.
The first person is Savannah Raham. I'm sorry if I'm butchering your name. Item number five.
May I just ask you, when you come up and speak, please make sure you clearly state your name and the agenda item you're speaking on and your residency. You don't have to give us your address, just your residency, so we know how to contact you if we have a follow-up.
Okay. Good evening, council members. Good evening, the people of Niagara Falls. My name is Silvana Rahman. I am a resident of Niagara Falls and I will be speaking on agenda item number five. I'm here to speak on behalf of the people, the hard-working families, seniors, and taxpayers who are tired of watching our city's money get poured into vanity projects while our basic needs go unmet. Tonight, you're being asked to authorize a $4 million offer just for a land acquisition. It's not even building something. A price tag funded by taxpayers with no feasibility study made public, no state funding secured, no committed partnerships, and no anchor tenant for the so-called Sentinel Park. Let me be very clear. This resolution isn't about recreation. It's about rushing a project that has no clear financial backing and about forcing residents to foot the bill for something that has not been justified, explained, or supported by the community. Where is the feasibility study? Why hasn't it been shared publicly before this vote? Why are we being asked to act on the mayor's appraisal prepared in secret without any opportunity for this council or the public to properly view it? You say you want to fight blight, but what about the blight in our neighborhoods? What about the housing crisis, the broken sidewalks, the crumbling roads, the rising violence? Is that not worth $4 million? This city has been held hostage by political showmanship for too long. Niagara Falls doesn't need more promises. We need priorities. We need transparency. We need courage to say no when the numbers and the people say no. I urge this council to table this vote, demand transparency, and put the people of Niagara Falls first. We will not forget who stood for us and who stayed silent. Thank you.
Councilmembers, our next person that's going to speak is going to be Tanya Barone, and she listed agenda item number five.
Good evening. Tanya Barone, Niagara Falls. I'm here to speak on agenda number five, the resolution written by Mr. James Perry that was added last evening. I would like to point out that it's my opinion that this agenda item may be why we rescheduled the regular meeting and it was moved to this evening so that all council members are present to give the three yes votes needed. It's my understanding that one of the council was not able to attend the regular Wednesday I'm asking for transparency in the situation because the agenda items that I saw before this one popped on last evening, none of them warranted a rescheduling of the meeting. Now it makes sense to me. With that being said, regarding Sentinel Park, I have some questions. Has this feasibility study been completed? I did a little digging in previous agendas and saw that this company was hired in 2022. It is now 2025, and it seems that we still have not had a completed study. Number two, have we acquired the 10th Street Park? The mayor has claimed it was never transferred legally over 20 years ago. That park, if it's legally ours, should not be included in the appraisal figure of $4,29,000. It's my understanding, and it might not be accurate, I haven't been able to check into it, but is the park five acres of land? Because if that is true, that's half of what the mayor is trying to take by eminent domain. So that figure is not accurate. I feel we, the taxpayers, deserve transparency also in regards to the exact amount spent on lawyers' fees thus far, and it took a person with a FOIL request to appeal after two years of asking those same questions and was not given the exact figure. And this battle continues, and I feel it will continue, and the dollar amount will just continue to pad the lawyers' pockets because they'll argue till the cows come home. It's our money being spent. I feel like we're doing things backwards. We should be building up our area and then building an arena. I'm not opposed to development, but I think that we need to fix what we have broken first, then bring business, because no one's going to want to come and stay. They're going to visit and leave. It's exactly what we've been doing for years. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Vincent Colley, Agenda four and five.
I have a timer here to keep myself on time. Good evening, illustrious council, corporation council, city clerk, ladies and gentlemen of Niagara Falls. Just real quick, just want to hit a resident of Niagara Falls, just want to hit agenda item number four real quick. What is climate mitigation? Are we having a weather machine, a weather death ray, Star Wars-type, we're going to mitigate the rain and the sun? I'd be curious to know, because we do have a conservation advisory council that's in our charter that's supposed to be there to help us answer environmental issues, water issues, land issues, air quality, all that, all those kind of things. So that's from our charter. So I'd just be curious, we could revitalize that or was that not considered? But the more important one definitely is agenda item number five, and I'm going to take a different tactic, because I've been a project engineer, design engineer, application engineer, mechanical engineer for 15 years. And when you think of a project, the first thing that comes to mind is, do we need this? Do we need it? This project X, this product X, do we need it? And number two, is it feasible? Can we do it? Can we design it? Can we build it? Can we make it? And then three, you get into negotiations. The mayor says $4 million. Okay, that's our side. There's always two sides up to an equation. So what's the other side going to come back with us? 10 million? 20 million? So that 4 million is going to go up because that's negotiation. If you buy a used car, you say, man, I'll give that car to you for 1,000. He say, man, I'm asking for two Gs. Okay, I'll give you 1,500 for it. And then you just keep bartering. So we say 4 million, but that's going to go up. Then we also say $165 million for the, for the bond. Obviously, that's going to go up. Obviously, that's going to go up. So then we, we're talking about project building, development. So you got, do we need, number one, the feasibility, number two, the cost negotiation, number three, and number four, doing the work to, to, to back all that up, to do the research, to look into it, to see, to see, are these numbers real? Where did this number come from? Where did that number come from? What's the cost of material? What's the cost of labor? And then you need time to do all of it. So you get this package of stuff and you just have time to just, is everything kosher? Is everything copasthetic? Is everything right? What about purchasing? What about project? What about the building? What about the labor? Are we all good with this? Now let's translate that to what we're doing now. Fire, ready, aim. It's their property. Now it's not their property, but now it is their property so we can take it and so we can buy it. That's some Bugs Bunny, Abbott and Costello-type stuff. That's all, what are we doing? What is this? We can't be serious. And then we get this at the darkened night, oh, dark 30, and next you know, oh, we got an agenda item. Where's the due diligence? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker, Sean Mapp, and it looks like Item Number Five. Is that Matt?
Good evening, council members. My name is Sean Mapp. I come before you, not just as a candidate, but as a concerned citizen, a concerned father, a concerned business owner, an investor in the future of Niagara Falls. I want to pose a question, which is a simple one.
Which item?
Agenda Five.
Okay.
I want to pose a simple question tonight. What is it we are doing? Are we building, or are we going to... Man, Perry, you threw me off a little bit, brother. We're being told to trust an appraisal we haven't seen, an appraisal that, to my understanding, has not been made available to the council or the public. If we're being asked to make decisions based on that document, then the vote should be tabled until every council member has the opportunity to study it. That seems feasible. Speaking of feasible, where's the feasibility study for San Antonio Park? Is it sitting on the table next to the appraiser on the mayor's desk? Because here is what it looks like. We're being asked to approve a path forward without critical information, without funding commitments, without an anchor tenant, and without, of course, transparency. Let's be honest, this is a $165 million gamble with zero guarantees and no clear return on investment. Meanwhile, the city has launched costly legal battles on the claim that we already own the land. I'm perplexed. If we own the land, why are we offering to buy it? That makes no sense. Has the effort been abandoned? If so, how much of the taxpayers' money have we spent fighting for a land we're trying to buy? This isn't about being against parks or development. I support growth, but what I do not support is moving forward blindly while real opportunity for our families, our communities, gets buried under political theater. So I ask you to slow this down. Demand the documents, demand the truth, demand a plan that adds up, not just one that sounds good on headlines. And I want you guys to understand one thing. My stance, my criticism, doesn't discriminate. I don't care if you're the mayor or NFR. Anyone standing in the way of this city prospering can get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Janine Gallo, Agenda Number Five.
Okay, here we go again with the park. The park is a park, is a park. Agenda Five.
Ms. Gallo?
Yes.
The item number you're speaking on and residency, please.
I think you know who I am. Janine Gallo.
I know who you are. I'm asking for item number you're speaking on.
She says it to everybody. She announces it.
Are you going to argue with me, or are you going to stay by the form?
Ms. Gallo?
Yes. No, you just said a.
Item number and residency, Ms. Gallo. Everybody else has said it.
Okay, Hitler, I got it. Janine Gallo, Town of Tonawanda, Agenda Five.
Thank you.
You going to start my three minutes now? Okay. Wow. So a park's a park. You're going to buy a park that you said you own. Okay, you have $4 million. Where'd you get the money from? How about building a park where they've been asking for a park for eight years? 20 years. I'm just throwing that out. But again, the city constantly throws these things. Someone who couldn't even read a rabbi's bio, could not read it, couldn't read it, an eighth-grade bio.
Ms. Gallo, that is your first warning. Keep it up.
Okay. Can write this thing up in the middle of the night? I find it impossible. That's all I'm saying. So whoever wrote it, what attorney wrote it, they did a good job, but it certainly didn't come from the council member. Okay, so again, you have, the park is a park, you're going to buy a park that you supposedly own, and again, you're taking another park and putting businesses in the park. So are parks in Niagara Falls, either are they parks or are they businesses? Do you sell them? Do you keep them? Do you guys know what you do with the parks? You have a park now, a 4.5 million project. You don't even have fencing around it. I went there yesterday, and kids were inside that building playing on the equipment. Who's going to pay that bill when OSHA comes and some kids hurt? And whoever company you hired, it's not that much money to put fencing around it. It's the law. So you're going to start another project, number five, when you can't even handle another project, that someone's going to get hurt in that building. It was dark, and kids are playing in there, and there is no fencing around it. But again, I'm not going to call OSHA because somebody's going to be a millionaire on your tax time.
Our next speaker is Anita Haring. I'm going to butcher it. Well, you said you wrote it, not like it's spelled, so. Thank you. I'm seeing double, too, so that don't help. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anita Hartunian.
Agenda Five started.
Agenda Five, and I'm resident of Niagara Falls. The city does not need a Centennial Park. We need jobs, yes, but we, the people, want things to do that families and friends can afford and enjoy. In my opinion and in the opinion of others, we need to take back our city. If we can afford $4 million, is this going to cost? It's probably going to cost more. Why can't we build up our city? MNFGA, Make Niagara Falls Great Again. Let's do that. People would like to do things that don't revolve around tourist attractions. An example, Winter Garden, Festival of Lights, and outside ice skating rinks like there used to be. Is NFR gifting the land like it was tossed around from 2023? Are we buying it? Is it half and half? Can somebody clarify that? Does anybody know? Does anybody know? I haven't been clear about that. The mayor, in my opinion, is disrespectful for not being here and explaining why we should have a $4 million-plus Centennial Park built. He's not here to explain to the people what's the return on investment? What's the revenue system? Is it going to continue for the next 50 years to create revenue continuously? The casino has events. They aren't even able to fill their events. So what makes us, well, the mayor and whoever else is involved in this Centennial Park, think that that can be advantageous to our city in the upcoming years without the taxpayers paying and paying? We already are double-paying for our garbage fee, which I don't agree with that either. And the, okay, hold on. I lost my thing here. Hold on. Okay, so we need to build up our city before we need a Centennial Park. Not only that, but like I said, the mayor should be here to speak on and explain to the people what's going on. The mayor can address, attack, and criticize on his weekly addresses on Fridays about the speakers and council, but he's never here at the meetings. I don't think that's fair, and it's not fair to the people. It's also not fair.
Please stick to Item Number Five, please.
That's part of the Item Number Five, who's not coming to the meetings to explain and be transparent and what's going on.
Our next speaker is Ken Hamilton, and I think it says Painting Streets, but I'm not quite sure. There's not a, let us know what the number is? I'm, no? Okay, thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Arlene Doss, and she listed Agenda Number Five.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Jackson. I live here in the city of Niagara Falls. I'm going to speak on Item Number Five. And as I always speak up here, policies, practices, and procedures. I don't know how, and I'm very insulted. I think the council members should be instructed to turn their cellphones off while they're sitting on the bench so they can pay attention to what's going on. However, we have started this process of this Centennial Park for nearly seven years now. I recall the process of trying to develop a park. The process included, you need to go to the community. The community needs to have many community meetings. I have not once seen a community meeting over something we're going to spend $165 million. You need to get signatures. You need to get approval from the community. I have not seen a petition go out yet for us to sign and say, "We want Centennial Park." I don't understand how $3 million require sweat equity, time, running the street, getting letters from everybody when, I think it started as a $2 million, $200 million per? Now we're inching down, and we're saying it's $165 million. You need to cut this foolishness out because you're not going to build a Centennial Park even with $200 million. It's going to take nearly several million dollars just for the seats alone. I don't know what century you guys are living in today, but that cost for that park is not going to be that. Again, we have a hockey arena. We have a stadium in the middle of the city. Why not take money invested in that area so that even those that come out of town, the people from Buffalo, can leave the city of Buffalo and go all the way to Amherst to see a football game? Why can't we take care of our stadium and have people go to the stadium, go to the ice rink, and visit the ice rink? Please stop wasting taxpayers' money just because the majority of people have told you we don't want Centennial Park. And $4 million is not what the 10th Street is going to cost you. That's just a made-up number. I could tell you right now, you're going to be out of $10 million or more just for that 10th Street Park. Stop fooling the people that live here in the city of Niagara Falls. This shouldn't be tabled. It should be completely scratched because we benefit nothing from it, absolutely nothing. Y'all have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Frank Henleys. Is that it? Okay, sorry. One and five.
My name is Frank Henley. I live in Niagara Falls. Agenda Item, I put one on there just because they might try to stop me, but number five. If you got $4 million to pull out of nowhere, you should be investing that into the city of development. How can you build something new and you haven't taken care of the old? The history has proven, we are piss-poor in maintaining, but we want to build a new house. We have dilapidated buildings, bad streets, but we haven't done our due diligence to prepare a future for our children, young adults, and entrepreneurs. Main Street looks terrible. Pine Avenue needs some more help. But you want to take $4 million just to buy a land? Let me just go ahead and call a spade a spade July. NFR, what's the other company name? It starts with an M. There's a battle between them. It's just foolishness. This needs not to happen. Your vote today will speak to your heart concerning the city. It will speak to your true intentions of what you need to happen for the city because at the bottom line, there's so much work to be done to rehab the city. Programs that need to be started and funded to help our youth, young adults, and I don't care who wrote it. I don't care how you put it together. It doesn't make sense at all. And if you see fit to say yes by any means, it speaks to your character, where you are, and your viewpoint on the city. And I put that pressure on you because I need you to understand, we don't want it. We don't need it. It's not required. The casino, we got entertainment. We got 10 to 20 parks, not up to par. Let's handle what we have. Let's handle it well. Let's provide programs for youth, young adults, and entrepreneurs. Let's invest and rehab these buildings, let those buildings meet somebody with a business plan, and let's create innovation here and not build another park. So to the person who wrote it, whoever you are, I can care less. It's not necessary. It's not needed. It's not required. I got a meeting with the mayor June 24th. I'm not afraid of him either. So just let y'all know that this is not acceptable. But there's other ways that we can use our funds and monies here in the city. So let's get those noes together from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Josh Randall, and it looks like Agenda Number Four.
Hello, Josh Randall, speaking on Agenda Item Number Four. I'm a resident of the city of Buffalo. I am the Cornell Cooperative Extension of Niagara County Natural Resources Educator, as well as being a board member for the Niagara Beautification Commission. So Climate Smart Communities, which is what the topic of Number Four is, they're an important way for increasing public participation in both the planning and the analysis of climate-oriented actions. Specifically, this can involve making our communities safer, more resilient, more financially responsible. And it's also going to ensure that we're more resilient on a time scale that we have a lot of difficulty thinking about, especially when we're thinking about actions that are going to take place over the next year or next five years. And really, one of the ways that this is really a valuable tool is that this involves the use of volunteers. And these volunteers are then able to access directly city officials and city staff to be able to work on really specific projects, things like, you know, heat resilience maps and being able to think about walkable cities, actions that we know that people in this room and people on the council have been concerned about in the past. And especially, this is a really valuable tool for the city to think about how to plan for the future because Climate Smart Communities across Western New York have already earned $3 million over the last few years by participating in various actions. And really, again, this is a way for volunteers to be able to directly access some of the work that happens in these rooms. And so part of my role as being a Cornell Cooperative Extension of Niagara County is I help support this through the Climate Stewards Program. So this is a way to help train volunteers and be able to get them ready to be able to participate on a Climate Smart Community Task Force if it is created tonight. And so we've actually gotten funding from DEC because they know that this is a way to be able to help prepare our communities to make use of these task forces. So this would be a way to, you know, train volunteers for free, and we have a little bit of funding to help support particular projects that volunteers are interested in that'll help build that resiliency. And I know there was another person here earlier that was concerned about, you know, what about mitigation and what about, sort of the actual duties of a. what about mitigation and what about, what are sort of the actual duties of a task force like this? So mitigation is really just trying to ensure that we're reducing greenhouse gas production. This has a wide variety of actions. We know this includes things like traffic safety. This includes thinking about the greenhouse gases, which some of our recent DEC reports have indicated that Niagara Falls has really high levels of ethane that we're not really sure about. So these are things that mitigation actions could look like. And then adaptation actions are things that are going to help make sure that after climate change happens, that our city is going to be safe for everybody, no matter how much money they make. And especially, we've had, you know, recent data for the county through the CLEAR Plan that indicated that Niagara Falls is really our highest-risk community when it comes to climate change, that there's a lot of really important economic, cultural, and population centers here in the city that we want to make sure are not going to be damaged by increasing flood levels. So again, this is a really, oh, yeah, sorry about that. It's a really great process. Thank you.
That was the end of the speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number, well, C3C, administrative updates. Do we have any administrative updates for this evening?
None.
Okay. Any community happening announcements from anybody? I have one from the NAC. They're going to be celebrating Juneteenth from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on June 14th. Anybody interested could contact the NAC. Everybody, I think everybody should know they're on the corner of 12th and Pine Avenue. Anybody else with anything?
Also, I believe Saturday, 9:00 a.m., I don't know if it's Gate of Heaven or Holy Trinity is the flag pacing at the graves, and then 11 o'clock, I believe, is the ceremony at Hyde Park for Memorial Day for the city.
Saturday.
Saturday.
On the first of June, there's going to be a gala for students. It's a scholarship gala that's going to be for June, celebrating Juneteenth. Excellence for young kids that are, that done well in school and that, you know, they're looking to further their education in college. I think that's something that we should definitely be prepared to support, you know, as a community and as a city. So that's our Juneteenth Gala that's going to be hosted by Niagara United Vision. For more information, I'm quite sure you can see Ms. Arlene Doss. She has the information as to, you know, the tickets, but definitely come out and support our youth.
Oh, Mr. Perry, as well as what you said last week, next Thursday, the year's anniversary of the high school, I believe they're giving tours and there's a celebration at the high school next Thursday evening. I believe it's at 6:00.
Okay, we're now at part four. We're at section four of the agenda. Are there any motions to amend or change the agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed by roll call? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmembers AJ.
Yes.
Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the motion's carried. Okay, moving on to six. Item six, we have any reports from the?
Yes, sir.
We do have a report from the city clerk's office.
We have a report and license issued and collections made in the city clerk's office during April 2025. It's been received and filed.
Okay, now we're at agenda items, legislative items. We have legislative item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve $120,000 indemnity only section 32 settlement relating to two pending workers' compensation matters as more fully outlined in the acting corporation council's recommendation memo dated May 15, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Okay, I will not restate any of the motions unless asked to do so. Are there any information requests about legislative item number one? Any opposition? If not, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie? Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmembers AJ?
Yes.
Chairman Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the motion's carried. Legislative item number two, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to appointment of Commissioner of Deeds in the city of Niagara Falls, New York.
Okay, may I have a second, please? Okay. Any information requests? Any opposition? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmembers AJ?
Yes.
Chairman Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the motion's carried. Item number three, may I have a motion on item three, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to scheduling a public hearing to consider the proposed helicopter flight plan of Rainbow Air, Inc. under chapter 301.04 of the codified ordinances.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there any information requests about this? Any opposition? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax? Councilmember Miles?
I'm actually interested in this public hearing because we made a big stink about the noise levels on, you know, Buffalo Avenue, Bitcoin, and everything else. I know that that was an issue too when it came down to these flights, so I would like to see what these flight plans would look like and will it actually affect the air, the sound quality of our residents? So yes.
Councilmember AJ?
Yes.
Chairman Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Motion's carried. Item number four, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to establishing a climate smart community task force and appointing its coordinator.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. May I have any information requests? Okay, any opposition? All right, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmembers AJ?
Thank you, Councilmember Archie, for taking on the leadership role of that committee. Yes.
Chairman Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the motion carried. Item number five, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to authorizing the presentation of a written offer to acquire real property pursuant to eminent domain procedural law 303 and 304.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Chairperson Perry?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, may I have any information requests before we get into our discussion items?
It's not, yeah, maybe it's for time, but I don't see it indicated where the, where the money is coming from in the item.
In this item, there's no requirement to identify the source because what it really is about is providing, you're really, what you're really doing is, it's almost like providing an attorney with settlement authority. So just to review what's happened, and people have noted that this has been dragged out through courts for several years. The eminent domain proceeding went through a Supreme Court level here in the county. The city won that. NFR appealed it to the appellate division, so then it went to Rochester. The city won that. There was an attempt to appeal it to the Court of Appeals, which was denied, which is, it counts as a city, city winning that as well. So in the process of an eminent domain proceeding, at this point where the court review process has been exhausted, it now comes time for the, the party interested in condemning and taking the property, the city, to present an offer to purchase. And then there's a process that occurs after that. NFR could accept it. NFR could refuse to accept it. The likely course of action is, is that it may end up being decided by, by a court. The, the parties will present their arguments and their appraisals on, on price, and then at some point in the future, there will be a number. So no, no money, no check is being written tomorrow morning as a result of a vote for this item. It's going to take some time.
Make the offer $4 million, they say no. Where does the city say get another $6 million from? If it's $10 million, I'm just, 10 acres, million acre.
Well, I, I can't answer that hypothetical question because I, I'm not, I'm not privy to the budget, the budget, overall budget of the city. So I couldn't answer that question one way or the other.
Okay. Also for clarification, currently the city is in litigation for roughly half of that property, correct? For the parkland?
I mean, yes, we are. Several meetings ago, the council approved the city to commence what's called a quiet title action regarding half the parcel that the city is interested in. And so it's the, you know, when you look at an aerial map, the entire parcel looks somewhat like a square, but then imagine in your mind that it's divided and diagonally into two triangles. And so the triangle that's across the street from Social Services, that's the parcel that we've been able to determine has been a city park, dedicated city park since the late, late 40s. The effort to obtain that property actually started in the 30s. So there was a delay. It took time even, even then to get property. So late 40s, up until, very recently really, until, until NFR took title, that property was, was a city park. And I've seen the aerial images that demonstrate that there were two ball diamonds there. There was a comfort station on, on the premises. There's no doubt in my mind that it was, was a park. And, and so, yes, we are, we are in current litigation, the quiet title action, so that we can have a court resolve that issue and determine whether a prior administration overlooked or failed to get state legislature, New York State Legislature approval for us to sell a park to a private entity. And so that's the issue that's going to be decided on that half a parcel.
So I guess to follow up on that, why would, why would this agenda item be for the full acreage and not possibly just half?
No, it is for, it is for half. It's, it's for the, it's for the other triangle which NFR purchased some years ago from the state DOT.
So 9.8 acres? It doesn't, that's, I'm, I'm just asking because maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it looks like it's saying this $4 million is for the 9.8 acres. So wouldn't that be the whole entirety of parcel zero?
Yeah, I think it is. Yes.
Unless it was a typo, but just comprising 9.8 plus or minus acres.
Well, what you're reading from is the third whereas clause. Am I correct?
Correct.
Does it appear, does it appear anywhere else?
No.
Okay, so the point of that whereas clause, well, let me just say this about resolutions. When you see a resolution, whereas clauses are certainly informative and you should pay attention to them. However, the, the ultimate, the ultimate important part of any resolution is when you get to the, to the bottom of it where the council actually says, "Be it resolved," okay? So whereas clauses are purely for background information, and actually, this, this is an accurate statement because what's being referred to is an historical event of public hearings, which at the time they were conducted, the city, the city was not aware of the argument that the park was inappropriately sold. So at the time of, of the hearings, the public hearings, it was certainly on the agenda of those public hearings to seek to, to take the entire 9.8, 9.8 acres through eminent domain. And now we've discovered that it's actually not necessary to, to use eminent domain, we believe, to take the entire 9.8 because half of it should have never been transferred to NFR in the first place.
Gotcha.
I just, I want to share some notes that I have with my meetings with the mayor from this week and Tuesday, and I think I may have shared them with a couple council members already, but I just want to make it clear to the public. First of all, this is not about Centennial Park. This is about taking land back from NFR that they've been sitting on for so many years. And this is about half of the parcel. We have, we have seen maps that prove that this was parkland dating back to the 1940s. Half of this was parkland dating back to the 1940s, and I've viewed those maps and I think many of the other council members have also. This is about the half of the property dubbed parcel 00 that is not the parkland. And this money was derived at from an assessment, an assessment which is the fair market value that we want in an eminent domain process. So I just want to make that clear to everybody. And for those people who say that, you know, it's, it's, it's not about, this is not about the park, this is about taking the property over from, or this is not about, I'm sorry, this is not about the Centennial Park, this is about taking the property back. So I just want to make that part clear.
And I, I guess this is for anybody, and it was talked about here, and I believe it was also in the paper today or last couple of days, the feasibility study is not done, correct?
No, it's not.
To my knowledge, it's not, the feasibility study, first of all, only pertains to the proposed Centennial Park project. To my knowledge, it's, it's not ready, it's not completed. But as, as Chairman Perry has pointed out, this, this item is really for half the parcel to be returned to the city, which has been in NFR's hand for over a quarter century with promises to develop it over the years, that none, none of those promises have come to fruition. So it's been vacant property undeveloped since NFR took title to it. So, it's been vacant property undeveloped since NFR took title to it.
I think the last question I have before we get into the opposition, is there any confirmed support from the state as well as a specified money amount?
What, what the administration has been hearing from the state is that the state is, the state will talk about money once they know the city has the property. They don't offer, they don't offer hypothetical money, you know, I can't, it, like, like if the city were to say, you know, I want to develop, I want to develop. If, if the city were to say, I, I, we want to, you know, we want to exercise eminent domain against Tom DeBois's property for economic development, the state's gonna say, well, let's talk when, when you demonstrate to us that you, you have title to the property. In other words, that you can succeed in, in your court proceedings, which takes time. So, there, you know, there are no, there are no promises until, there's no promises made until the city, you know, gets title to both parcels. Then we'll be in a position to answer the question.
When do you foresee the feasibility report being made available?
I can't answer that question because I, I'm not privy to it. I have no idea, it'd be pure speculation if I said anything.
Any more information? Okay, moving on to opposition.
With the Centennial Park, that's actually false. Because the only way that we can even go into an eminent domain process, don't cut me off, is to have a reason to take the land from anyone, that's the law. You should know that. So, we can't go into, we couldn't go into an eminent domain against NFR if we didn't have a plan ourselves, and that plan was Centennial Park, that's why they called it Park, right? So, I, I just hate, and excuse my vernacular, but I hate being pissed on and saying that is raining. So, with that being the case, two, the whole idea that, one, this agenda item was given to us on Tuesday, that's not seventy-two hours. It was made to seem as if it was something that, you know, it was a revised version of the agenda that had four items, now we got five with an additional item. That's one reason to say no from the beginning. Because we're not gonna cherry pick which rules we're gonna follow from the city charter, which requires a seventy-two hour notice to us. That's one. We're in the court system, we're already set up. We're, we're going through this eminent domain process and we're talking about, you know, the nine point eight acres. And then, these are questions, now, I'm talking about questions that deal directly with our job. Where are we gonna get the money to build? I asked when the mayor was here for one of those few meetings that he showed up for, I asked him, where were we gonna get the money regarding, and at the time, what, it was a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and fifty, whatever, these numbers that pop up. Where are we gonna get the money, you know, where was the feasibility study? It baffles me for anyone to, any one of us up here to dive headfirst into this Centennial Park idea, this pie in the sky idea, and not have a feasibility to study to show if it even works here. People who are experts at building these projects said we would lose anywhere between four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year just to build it in that space. Now, two, where is the feasibility study? There has been no transparency. If Dante wanted to build something for five million dollars here, I would have to have documentation the size of Bible. That, and I would have to have so many different things. There are no financial projections of this. You're talking about, and we're, all we're doing is recreating services because we do have a unutilized skating, ice skating rink that, that's not being packed out every week. We also still have a splash pad. We don't have, as it was mentioned earlier, an anchor tenant. So, we're, we're asking all of these questions, plus interest that we're gonna have to pay every year. We don't have good credit here in the city of Niagara Falls, so that's gonna be millions of dollars that we're gonna have to, where's that gonna come from? I asked the mayor, where is the public sector investment? He said, he said the same garbage that was just said, that we can't talk about any investors until we acquire the land, that's a lie. You don't have to acquire land to have a conversation. Matter of fact, that's backwards. You want to get people on board to actually go along with whatever it is that you're going with before you, so you can have power, a power source to acquire the land. It only makes sense. So, that whole idea was completely messed up, no private sector. I said, that's the same thing. Because, as a matter of fact, our governor actually came here because he was talking about the, they're gonna have an amphitheater in this Centennial Park as well. It's crazy that our governor came here talking about building an amphitheater away from where he was talking about building his project. So there, and I told him at that same point, you don't even have state support. You don't have anyone, all of your money friends, no one of them, none of your private sector investments are being put up by any of your friends or any of the people. So there is no investment, and the only thing is, is that this is going to be on the backs of the people. It's, I said that before, and what happens is, and this is where I get frustrated because this is what makes council looks like a joke. Because of the simple fact is, is this, he feels like he doesn't have to show up and talk to us because at the end of the day, these votes come to us and we gotta talk, and guess what? We're gonna get thrown under the bus. And, and he's gonna say, oh, council voted it through, so whatever the city, and guess what? He will be long gone, he won't be mayor anymore, and guess what? Our kids, my kids, everyone who sits here and owns property and lives here in the city, we're gonna have to foot the bill for a monument that this man wants to build for himself. So, that's, that's right there, that's the argument that, that deals directly with our job. Now let's talk about this.
Mr. Miles, your time, your time is up.
All right, I, it is no time. At the end of the day, like I said, there is a portion, no, it's a ten minutes. It's, it's not ten minutes? Hold on, wait, wait, wait.
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir.
Hold on, wait, ten minutes?
No, no, sir, it is not.
Oh, no, it's, it's not in the charter? Go read the city charter.
Mr. Miles, it's five minutes, sir.
No, 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 it's five minutes, it was five minutes.
I'm sorry, you're wrong.
The new, the new meetings didn't say anything about changing the ten minute time limit for us.
It did.
Wow.
It was five minutes.
So what, that's what happens. No, because you want to be non-transparent and you want to make sure that the people don't understand. And, and you don't run the meeting, but I, but you, but I, I hear what you're saying because, you know, I'm talking to him, so I'm not.
Your time is up.
Stay in your place. Stay in your place and stay in your lane, you're not in your lane, you're out of order.
You're out of, you're out of order, Mr. Miles.
No, no, point of, I'm talking to you.
Mr. Miles, I'm telling you, I'm talking to you now, we have a limit, five minutes.
Okay, so, okay, so watch this.
Continuing on.
You and I? You and I, we can, hold on, let's talk, me, you and I can talk, but make sure you, as, as the chairman, make sure you hold order from him because he has no right and no, he's stepping out of his boundaries.
Unfortunately, I've been given the job of keeping time.
What are you arguing about?
I'm, I'm talking about the fact that he's, I'm, I'll talk to you.
He is keeping the time.
No, okay, and then.
You want to keep arguing, you're out of order.
You, you just don't, you just don't want to get the information.
You're out of order?
You don't want the information.
That's the end of it.
Go ahead, you don't want the information.
Out of order. It's out of order.
You don't know that.
That's the end of it. You, you got, you had your five minutes.
No transparency, one term, that's what you are.
That's, that's a good.
Go ahead, it's all good.
All right, that's it. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to table this item.
The motion is, is the table by Mr. Zajak.
For further information. For further information.
Is there a second to table it, Mr. Zajak?
It was crazy, where's Brother Frank? So I, I literally woke up this morning and I'm like, you know, and I, and I'll, I'll say openly, like, I'm, I'm with fighting, fighting any developer that's holding our land hostage, that's, that's just me, that's exactly where I'm at. I don't, I don't say that I necessarily agree with what's coming after that, but I agree with fighting them to have them do something. But I thought about this morning, the uneven distribution of wealth and how it, how it will take a drain on all parts of the community, right? So, hold on, right, so I'm talking about, like, people are, people are screaming today, I've got more phone calls than ever. Like I said, I'm really popular today, I tell somebody, it's good, right? We're talking about potholes and streets and, and our buildings and lack of business here and there, and I need you just to, you know, can you just think about this? And I'm going, man, it's really weird when we want to, as a council, and I'm speaking to all of us also, just please hear me out, when we talk about investing in some other things and there's never money for it. When the idea comes back across to us, money appears and we vote yea. And I've, I've voted yea on some things I've agreed with. But I think we have to be more conscious of what, of, of, of what we are supporting and what, and what, and what we are feeding, right? There's a lot, hold on, there's lots of talk about kids and elderly folks and, I mean, working class in general. And we don't do well enough job at that. And while this may, at some point, respond to the, the seasonal need for, for workers, like, let me be comfortable saying yeah. So I would, I would be okay with holding for a feasibility study as well, even if it's a crappy one. At least show it to me. Show it to me. Show it to me so I, I can explain to the people when they ask me, why did I do that? So I'd second, I'll second it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna second the table. How about chill out, please?
Okay, the motion on the floor is to postpone to table. Table?
I have Miles. Wait, Archie was second for it or?
Zajak made the motion to table.
Thank you, I wasn't sure.
And it was seconded by?
Tables always confuse me.
It was seconded by Brian Archie?
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna take roll to table. Item number five. Councilperson Archie?
Yes.
Councilperson Bass?
No.
Councilperson Miles?
So, with that being said, that is my bare minimum. I feel like we should have voted no. However, at the end of the day, I, we, we need transparency and there is none. So I vote yea to table it.
Councilperson Zajak?
Yes.
Chairman Perry?
No.
I have three yays and two nays. Item number five is tabled.
Number, tabled. Okay. That concludes the legislative items for this evening. Now we're back to public speakers.
Yes, sir, we're gonna do the good of the community. The first person who signed is Lloyd Hamilton. The topic is sinkholes.
I like to feel rather strange standing up here because I was raised by parents who told me that you could eat and sleep in the house, but the house is a many better. You know, you could have a house and a community, but the community is a many better because you're there. You know, and actually look at that. It's all work. I believe is that you talk about spending all this money for entertainment. There's no way I'm gonna have everybody come over to my house and visit me and do any type of that. My house is a way to sit there.
A hybrid vehicle. And because of not only the potholes, but there are actually sinkholes in the city. And what happened is my vehicle, my power steering condenser modulator went out. My alignment went out of my car, I had to take it out to Facilla Hyundai, and it stayed out there for thirteen months, and Facilla even sold the dealership while my car was out there because of these roads. And so I hear people talking about entertainment here, but why would you bring entertainment to a raggedy place like this? It just doesn't make sense to me. It seems like the priorities are all mixed up. We need to fix the potholes, the infrastructure, to give these youth something to do. I remember when I used to go to truck, we had the auto body shop, they would go out to the junkyard, get a vehicle and teach us how to work on that vehicle. There used to be vocational trainings in every high school here. Kids don't know how to do anything, so we have to send jobs overseas because of a poor infrastructure. And then when something goes wrong, everything's, is at the dock because we're not building anything anymore. There's not one job that I worked before I joined the Navy that's still here. Slipcoats, car rental, general racing. And so I see people get ticketed because they have trash in the yard, but I see all these companies abandon these buildings and nobody's saying anything about that. Priorities are mixed up. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The next speaker for the good of the community is Unika Lewis. And the topic is good for the community.
Unika Lewis, City of Niagara Falls, how's everybody doing? Um, I pretty much came up here, I kind of missed.
Speak up just a little bit.
I missed a good portion, that's what we'd be saying to you when we'd be out here. We can't hear you either. Um, but I pretty much was, wanted to speak on the things that are going on in the city, like the, the streets, the, um, the fourth district and things like that. We need to focus more on that and uplifting, you know, the things that we already have that, in the city that is broken instead of imposing things like Centennial Park and things like that that are gonna keep us, you know, broken or in debt for however many years to come. There is kids that have, my son is thirteen and the, he, he is involved in a lot, but it's only because of things that I look for him to do so that he's not, you know, out on the street doing things that he shouldn't be doing, getting in trouble and things like that. I think we should focus more on how to uplift the city with what we already have and what's already broken and fix that, and then move on. I'm still not a fan of Centennial Park, but, you know, then think about things like that further on down the line. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Barone.
So I'm here to speak on the last meeting when we amended Casella's contract for our garbage collection. I put a video out on Facebook, someone, a resident had an issue recently with. Thank you. They had an, an issue recently with one of their cans, a recycling can that had a blue lid. I didn't know that we were able to pay more money, not that we should be paying more money for a larger can, but that we're allowed to put a blue lid on, or have someone put a blue lid on our green can to have a larger garbage can. The garbage collection service came and they put their arms around the can and as they were dumping the can, the whole can fell inside the garbage truck. Now, you can imagine the comments that came about from that video. Now, you can imagine the comments that came about from that video. Complaints, too, lots of complaints. The person that was driving the garbage truck, I happen to know. They reached out privately, and I asked if I could share the information that he provided. He said that sometimes when the garbage cans are heavy, or have wet material like mulch or something heavy at the bottom, when they go to dump them, they shift, and they fall off the arms into the truck, it happens regularly. He said when the can hit the blades, he could hear it, and it was toast. So he wasn't gonna get out of the vehicle and, out of the truck, and try to retrieve the can. Took her three weeks to get a replacement can. Now today I'm being sent bags of garbage, now they're allowed three bulk items, um, every week. Her bulk items are not, also picked up, and the rats got into the bags. So, we have major issues. Now it makes me wonder if they wanna replace the eighteen thousand cans, and offered us eighteen thousand cans for an extended contract, because they're the ones that are damaging the cans, and destroying the cans, and are the cans ending up in a landfill. Because we're worried about climate-smart communities, but yet we're contributing to this waste that's building up, and the dump is just going to keep getting larger and larger. It's a humongous mountain, now with solar panels on it, what are we doing? It does not make sense. But to extend a contract and have someone hold us, it seems, as hostage for things that they're doing, um, doesn't make sense. We do pay an extra fee yearly for our garbage collection, that's also included in our taxes. Um, it just seems like one bad deal after another, and I'm tired of it.
Your time is up, thank you. He is. I would be, but I can't see. Our next speaker is Janine Gallo, for the Good of the People.
Actually, I'm Janine Gallo, I'm still from the town of Tonawanda. I usually come up here, and I come with blank, and then I take notes as the stupidity goes on at the meetings, and I have so much to say. Um, just like Juneteenth, I have a dream. I have a dream that the chairman sits at the end, and the end is out the door. That's my dream. It's just a dream. Hope it's reality. We have to deal with egos, someone wants their name on something, so we have to deal with that. How many contracts are gonna go through here, not finished, not filled, and you just keep saying yes to them, and then they do whatever? The garbage, why don't you go back to doing the garbage yourself and creating jobs here for yourselves in Niagara Falls? And if you don't even wanna do that, I did a little homework. This company's going to every city and town and low-bidding all the other companies, or all the other towns that do it themselves, so they get the contract. So far, I didn't do, I don't know a lot, but so far, the only stupid ones are Niagara Falls. Modern does contracts, and they're responsible for the totes. They break 'em, they fix 'em, so they don't need the Parks Department to fix 'em, they don't need you to pay for them. It's just another dirty deal, that they're somewhere down the road, that you're making stupid things with the garbage, with this company. They're not doing good, there's complaints all over the place, and, but yet you give, reward them. Now, we also go here as the council, you should have a little, you should be the role models, since we're, we're, we're the idiots, and, and, and the stupid ones, and whatever else you wanna call us. You're, you're, you're giving rewards to kids for, you know, not being bullied, you could give a story about someone being bullied, and give them a reward because they survived it, and, even though you can't read a sentence, but yet online, you're letting, you're, you're condoning bullying. It's so silly, like a dog, if a dog's lost, they're ripping to pieces, okay? What, what's gonna happen when the dog's lost in the park? And it's not a five-pound dog, it's a pit bull that's been running the streets for months, and it gets loose in the park. So if you wanna bash people and do things, be smarter what you're saying. Be smarter what you're saying. We have, this week alone, three dogs from rescues that were lost through their fosters. It's no, it happens. And we return those dogs safely back to the rescues. Okay? But it happens. So if you wanna judge it, you voted for a four-point-five million dollar dog shelter in a public park, in a public park. So while you're out there slandering, think about what you're slandering about, because next year, when the pit bull takes a kid's face off at the swings, we're gonna say, whoa. Thank you, Tom, sweetie.
Our next speaker is Anita Harudunian? Did I say that right? Probably not. Okay. Thanks.
My name is still Anita Harudunian, I'm still from Niagara Falls, and I'm speaking on the Good of the People. Um, first of all, I would like to address the five-minute speaking rule, and the reason why I would like this to be revisited and requested back to the five minutes, is there are some people here who are differently abled people. People who would like to speak, but find it difficult to get all their thoughts together and speak in three minutes, even with a written notes like I have here. I don't think it's fair to everybody to try to get everything in in three minutes. If I speak like this real fast, you guys probably, nobody will ever understand what I'm saying, right? So, um, uh, yeah, I would like to revisit that, three minutes is just not enough time. Next, um, our voices at the meetings don't seem to be taken into consideration, our voices don't seem to be heard. Do we need to join hands, march around the city hall, and lift every voice and sing to have our voices be heard? What does it take for our opinions and our concerns to be considered at the city council meetings? This is supposed to be for us, for the whole city, not just the opinions of the city council. From what I'm, you know, what I gather, that's why we're all here, to have everybody's opinion be counted and considered. Uh, the next thing I would like to talk about is, I understand that the mayor in the city charter is not, um, required to be here, even though he's not required to be here, and we, the people, feel like he should be here. He is our leader. He is the leader of this city. He should absolutely be here to attend the meetings. That being said, I would like to personally invite the mayor to start to attend the city council meetings, so that he can face us, and not just face us in the city, uh, weekly address on Fridays. I think that would be a good idea, along with all of the department heads to be here, and address our concerns. It's, it's not fair to the people that, I mean, I don't know how you guys vote, I don't know if you guys listen to our opinions, and this is not an attack, this is not meaning to be sarcastic. This is a, a valid, a, a valid concern, a valid complaint about the three minutes, about the mayor not being, you know, showing up. He's our leader, why is he not here? Why is the city charter not requiring him to be here? Uh, I'm, I'm really confused about that. The city charter needs to be rewritten.
Time up.
Thank you. The city charter needs to be rewritten, so he's required to be here. Yes, I understand that, thank you. And I'm differently abled, that's why I can't get all my thoughts into three minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Hamilton. No topic was listed.
Ken Hamilton, Niagara Falls, New York, sorry about not filling in the end, but somebody was talking to me at the sign-up, and I figured they would just listen to me, whereas there are others who won't. But you know, this woman here, she just brought up a very good point. The city council can change the charter, there's a procedure for that. There's also a procedure for the citizens to change that charter. And just because of what this woman said-
Where is she?
Just because of what she said, well, I haven't been doing anything lately, and I think I'm gonna put together a group of people-
I'm ready.
-in order to make that happen.
I'm ready.
Because what's happening is the exclusion. You know, this three-minute rule, I'm just gonna say it, it's just back crap, crazy. Restricting somebody based on how many people can speak their mind on a certain subject, especially when my city council no longer meets, and the committee of the whole room to discuss these issues a week before the char, at the charter, so that they know that they don't have to be so much debate, and that the people are better informed, the press is even better informed. But what we do, and this is what Vincentello once said to me, we were frenemies, because sometimes we fought, and sometimes we got along, it was like we were married to each We get into this big fight, but he says, the city council says, and he says, I'm gonna say it like he said it, couldn't he? They keep telling me that they, they, they don't get the message, they don't understand anything, that, 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 they don't agree with what's on the agenda. And he says, and yet, when I come into the parking lot, to come into these meetings in many cases, they're sitting in their cars opening up the agendas, because they're not taking it very seriously. And sometimes I have to ask the question, because I've been doing this forty-two years, before he went to law school. Forty-two years I've been writing resolutions for the city council. Come back from the Navy, I got involved, and there is not enough lead time, you guys didn't even vote to get yourselves a secretary in your own office, and you have to fight and discuss all of these things here, and the day is, when it's clear that you have not known and understand what the heck you're talking about. And I think that's a disgrace to these citizens that come up here and have to endure this, and this empty seat right here can be changed by the people, the citizens of the city of Niagara Falls, there is a procedure to do that, and there have long been a procedure to do that. And so, I don't remember what I was gonna come up here to talk about in the first place. Yeah, I can't wait until your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker for the Good of the Community is Ms. Arlene Doss.
I can tell what happened.
I'm, I'm sorry?
You're good.
Oh, you're good, okay, thank you. Looks like the last speaker for the evening for the Good of the Community is Frank Hanley. Am I saying that right?
I'm gonna take this microphone off, this is what I do. So, um, quickly, uh, to change the charter, all you need is ten percent of the registered voters to change the charter. So if you get that together, you get ten percent of the people that voted, you can do a thing. Um, swiftly. Um, quickly, uh, thank you guys for your time today, this conversation is regarding y'all, so pardon my back, no disrespect to you, okay? Um, we have responsibility for ourselves to put things in order. It has been shown, proven.
Sir.
Please hold.
The rule, the rule is to address the council, read the, please read the rules, it's to address the council.
I just addressed the council, and I told the council, I have no disrespect towards you, and I'm speaking to the good of the people.
Sir.
Yes.
Please, address the council.
Restore my time, if you don't-
Address us, address the council, speak to the council.
If I address the council, as I am now, to tell the people of Niagara Falls-
Address the council.
-that we cannot wait on the council to do its job, so we shall, and we will, be to create our own-
Meeting is adjourned. Officer, remove him. Officer, please remove him.
We gotta do that thing, get the family to be free, get the heartland, that kids accept. I'm not waiting on nobody else.
The meeting's adjourned.
Hard for us, the community's death, and it's just action.
Meeting's adjourned.
Call the church, what do you need? What do your children need? What does the family need? Let's figure it out, let's make it happen. I'm not waiting on them, but what I will say is, any government, any job that's coming into this city has a agenda for the community. If they are not, I will knock on their door myself. What is your plan for the city of Niagara Falls?
All right.
Period. Period. I ain't playing with you.
All right.
I ain't giving no time, that's a little experience for myself. But we can't wait on them, y'all.
All right.
So whatever you need for your family, let's do it.
All right.
Whatever you need for your children, let's make it happen.
All right.
We agree with you.
All right.
I just wanna check this thing on purpose.
We happen to be different people.
I'm not.
I don't wanna be in a whole, I'm sick of this.